You have that. Live on there now then. All right, well, I guess it's sudden call meeting order, first thing is. Bunch of reasons remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, approval of the agenda, additions, corrections, additions. We have this. Little permit that just come up.
Yeah, there's one in there too.
Oh, okay, on the back, I didn't go that far.
Under miscellaneous.
No, right. Move through. All right, someone second. On favor say aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, the minutes from the regular March thirteenth meeting, April tenth meeting, April nineteenth meeting, April twenty-sixth meeting. Any additions, corrections to those minutes? If not, so may make a motion to approve. Move, someone second. On favor say aye, aye opposed, motion carried. Okay, approval of the bills, we have quite a rash of bills here, do we want to go through them just a little bit or?
Talking about ones about. Like Dan prints out, so I just did a spreadsheet on invoices received and I have a medical. But now I'm. I still have a lot of bills to do yet that I haven't gotten to. That'll be on the agenda, I have to after payroll tomorrow. But some of the checks that you have there that you can, should be able to stick them off and then. Hopefully makes it a little easier.
Minnesota Valley Council of Governments, which is CAG. We paid twenty six hundred, well, we know we paid forty-six, we paid forty-seven hundred dollars a year now. We've asked for their help, they have nobody to send out. Should we still remain in there? Even though they can't provide any service, I mean, that's kind of like throwing forty-seven hundred dollars away because they haven't, haven't you talked to them at all now, John, or?
Not since I tried to get somebody out to help with Banyan.
And they never had nobody, never returned no phone call and over nothing.
I have talked to him and I have said, I need a, I have a couple more questions that I'm going to email the lady about. Probably tomorrow, once I get through payroll, but.
What are your thoughts on? Did we keep them?
Well, if they don't have anybody to help us.
I don't know, I don't know.
Looking, you know.
I don't have any other, any real experience with it yet, so I don't have an opinion really one way or the other. Might be, might be a good, to hold it.
Able to for a month?
Or maybe two, assuming that one that was paid.
That's a half year, so.
Yeah, it's a half a year, so.
Yeah.
Twice.
Yeah.
And then, or was it your?
There's no contract with them either, it just.
Wasn't this one on?
And this last month. Oh, that answer, for sure. Ooh, look at it range.
Ail.
Ail too. That'd be the thing.
I see it off the windshield out there.
Wasn't this going?
Thing to ask.
The counter, did we discuss?
It's still hell and you don't see the windshield, it's, tell me. Something. It's mine.
I still see the windshield.
Well, they came out and repaired some stuff and then he had them serve it. Race, when did they do that repair on the tractor, it was seventeen hundred and eighteen, I thought we paid that a month ago.
That was back in March. I don't think that was in April.
Uh, when?
That's RDO.
That's for the main hydraulics.
Uh, it said, oil filter, thousand hour service, seventeen, seven, eleven.
You would have signed, you signed that check actually at the April meeting, because those.
So we got some in addition?
Right, Ashley had some bills out there that she had ready for April meeting, all those that are dated April tenth. But it's all still available, so. Okay.
Obviously, check five, four, six, eight, three, E. Must be forgot, and battery.
Where's this, where are you looking at here?
Right here on the.
Where, where are you seeing?
Oh, okay.
I don't have that.
Why do too?
I remember we're there, yeah, I had my paper on it.
All right, probably that's for the gas and. Batteries.
Probably. That'd be a lot of batteries.
I just wanted to point it out because it's the red iron gas station and I don't want to get in trouble. It's more than four hundred and sixty-four dollars worth of batteries, fuel too, obviously, okay. So, some of this here wouldn't be, some of this was paid already?
Yeah, everything that draw line. Had to check seventeen, seven, twelve and go up. All of those were done. By Ashley and you signed all those. Except for the three, those are payroll.
So, we got Burkharts on here, they billed us at the end of the April. Then, I take it. Because our total bills for the month is seventy-seven thousand bucks. That's very high.
Burkhardt isn't in there, I haven't done that check yet, that invoice came in late April.
Yeah, but it's down here at twelve thousand dollars.
And this one?
Uh, no, I'm looking on the registered. Twenty-six.
Oh, that's, oh, that's one they have to sign, that's why. That's in there.
So, this is the total of April bills?
Yes.
Just some of them didn't get paid.
Some of them were, you sign at the April meeting and the rest that you have, that small stack there are the ones that I did.
Okay.
So.
All right. Hey, you made it, all three days. You did it, you did it.
So, anybody else? Anybody else got any questions on the bills here then?
Okay, right. There's supposed to be people there.
They put me here tonight.
I rolled the chair that way, but he wouldn't go on. I see there's one in here for the firefighter. State border relief, that's that. Ah, my mind. Reimburse that. It's reimbursement, reimbursement's the word there. I see you got that paid, that was way behind, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It's in the check. Now, now it is, yeah, but that was something that should have been paid a while ago, right?
And I don't know. Well, that one was.
That was something that Burkhardt pointed out to us, yeah. One of, that was one of the things that he pointed out. So that's good, we'll get caught up on that.
Is the vacation leave and that all on that Banyan for you? To figure in per pay period? Okay.
Yeah, it is.
I wonder if that started out at zero. For each employee this year. In January, January, the first pay period in January should have only been like, on the former clerk should have been four point six two. And I can't remember what race, what, you know what you get per pay period? Because I know a year ago, there was like eight or nine extra hours on there, and I don't know if we ever adjusted that. So I was just wondering if that carried over into this year, or?
I would have to look.
You, you get a, you will print out on that vacation leave on the very first payroll of the year and that'll tell you. Because it says, to date, year to date. I forget how, there's three line items, but year to date, it was a first pay period, so it should have been four point six two a year ago and it was like thirteen something. There was extra eight hours on there and I was just wondering if that carried on this year or if that was a mistake last year.
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure you're overwhelmed with all of it. Say the least.
Say the least, yeah.
Did you take a load of ash or something down to the?
That was, someone dumped a lot of garbage down there.
Really?
Yeah, I just threw it out. Yeah, a small truck is full. Three thousand pounds.
So that cost the city one hundred and twenty-five bucks to whoever did that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. And there's a toilet down there too, but I think we can throw that in with the cement pile.
I told. Race, garbage pickup or dumpster, we'll just throw it in there that day, June. I think that got dumped on there last fall already and then winter hit and.
Holy cow, it costs eighty-six dollars to post that we're flushing hydrants. For the Appleton paper. But yet they don't cover our council meetings.
Yeah, he's here.
Oh, you're doing it. Oh, well, we haven't had anybody for what, three, four, five months?
That's since I've been.
No.
That's inside right here.
No, all right. Cool, we have representation.
Good. So, Tim, you actually work for them now, or? Okay.
All right, anybody else with questions on the bills or? Now and go back at them later and look through all of the revenues and everything, or? Want to take time to do it now? You haven't got that other fire hydrant repaired down there, right?
Nope.
No, I gotta wait until, well, if it's getting a lot of noise back, because when they came, rolling valves, you know, isolate that, don't let.
We're looking at turning about half a pound. When I do it, so it would be, we gotta get it. Good with the. Downtown as far as the restaurant and the locker and gas stations, so. Couple hours to do it, so it's just a matter of picking the right time to turn it off.
He banged on top of the wrench and they just stuck.
They, no, one turn and turns and turns and.
Oh, okay.
The other one, well, the water starts coming off the top.
Yeah, so do we have to get them both repaired before or?
Well, no, we can shut this off.
No, I mean, yeah.
And they're gonna, before we get patching down.
There you go, okay, yep.
Yeah, because those manholes be eliminated, there'll be stand pipes put in and stuff.
Okay, all right. That could be the last gas bill for that rental property, that house, because I told them go and hook that meter and take it out. That shouldn't be on there after, it's time for this time.
We have a credit at North State Supply. Right, or, you remember, John, I'm asking the kind of a. Question here for somebody that's just getting into it, but.
Yeah, one of them was.
Look them out. On this page. I five twenty-three.
Forty-three dollar credit at auto value.
Oh, I see that now too.
Um, but I think the North State's supply was zero.
Is it zero now?
So, it must have been, I'm assuming it was a return. Something must have been returned.
And we were into the habit of paying bills twice, that's why I just want to make sure that we're not doing that anymore. If we can make sure of that.
That's one nice thing with, when I was doing the spreadsheet, because sometimes I'll have an invoice and then there's a follow-up, the same amount.
Yep. Yeah, it takes a lot of looking.
So, the Dakota Supply, is that where you bought that inch and a half meter then, Race? Okay, so here, this raises another question. The month building has now been sold to an individual, right?
Yep.
Okay, well. It throws a meter up, blew the bottom of the meter out. For a tune of a thousand, eighteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Who should be responsible for that? The past owner, previous owner?
Yeah.
Because Ray called me down there and I looked and they cut out a piece of the wall. And they had this whole blanket stuffed in the wall and you could see right outside, right where the meter was.
No, I'd have to go back to the original owner, I would guess, yeah.
So, are we ever going to be able to collect that from the previous owner? Now that he has nothing to do with it?
What, I wonder what the water bill was, I suppose it, it was in the bill that is out there, huh?
They, their water is off from.
Maybe, but he never, there, this, it was made, Tom, so nobody drained the meter.
Oh, so it's just the meters?
Yeah, just the meter, yeah.
Okay.
The line goes up like this out of the meter, so whatever water when, it was sitting in the meter and blew the meter, bottom of the meter out, because Race called me to come down there. So there's a thousand and eighteen dollars now, we sure don't want to build a new guy. So is the city gonna? Take care of that, or are we gonna try to build the previous owner?
I don't know how that works, sir.
Yep.
Legally, I mean, you know, you can bill anybody for anything, but are they going to be able to collect for it?
That's right.
I mean, it doesn't make sense sometimes.
If I had a guess right now, the city will be eating that bill. That's what I would say.
I don't even know who to.
I should send them a bill and that way it's, at least we send them a bill.
Yeah.
Well, yep.
I guess we could do that, we could at least send them a bill.
Yep.
Because it, in our ordinance, some place, I think it does say you're supposed to. Mount that meter in a certain way with a certain insulation and all that stuff, so.
Well, like I told Race, when they put it back on, if they put a T on there, then you could have had a valve, because like I say, it comes out and it goes just up like this. Well, that's holding all that water. So, it sure ain't our fault, but I mean, it sure isn't fair to the new guy. But I.
And to build the original or the?
Original.
Previous owner, yep.
But that was just like, the poor new guy inherited about a hundred and twenty new, a hundred and twenty tires down there.
And then he bought them, didn't he?
Well, I mean.
No, it's too bad, you know, getting around it, yep.
Well, that's kind of, yeah.
And then the fence is in disarray, so if he comes here and wants to know, ask and wants to do a few things. And I hate to be hard on somebody that come into a building and finally occupied it, but there's some things that need to be straightened up down there again.
Quite annoying that.
When I, when I talked to him, he said he had planned on using that back lot, so I'm sure he's gonna clean up or do.
He's already cleaned up around the front and that, made a little bit of effort, Race hole, that big cement block that sat there tipped over for quite a while, so that's gone, looks better already.
But with that meter, we'll still have to pay it if we want to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. City will pay it, we'll just see if we'll get, ever get it reimbursed.
Yeah, I'll just need to give, it was one day afterwards, who, who, who that would go to, because I have no idea.
Yeah, okay, we'll get, we'll get you that information.
I'll make a motion that we bill the former owner.
Okay. Tom made a round second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Any further questions on the bills then? Or the revenue? Do you need more time to look through it yet?
This, this is a bill, this pre-service. You have to sign that.
You want to give it to?
Yeah, give it to them.
Middle numbers of them, what, invoice numbers? Yeah, some of them don't have an invoice. None of them, somewhere with the number.
And I know it's a little soon that they did take care of business last month, did the city get reimbursed for any school expense yet?
From, we got a check for a dollar from. From, yeah, that's the only one that I see.
This wasn't, was a deal that he was gonna take care of almost all the outlying expenses, right?
I don't think you paid, paid out that much, should be, we had, we had one paid, but I don't remember what it was.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember, I just remember we had to do a few things there to make it all work. Why do these here have a different number?
Ones ending in E?
Yeah.
Anything that ends in E, those are automatically taken from the checking account?
Oh, okay.
Like Northland's past.
Okay.
And so there's a sign and electronic check number, even though there's not a check, but that's just reporting within that. Banyan designs that.
Okay.
So on your spreadsheet, consolidated, you got it broke down to three things, but it'll come to the, what is it, that four?
Ninety-three?
Yeah, okay. Same with the gas.
Those are new coming in, these, these are just got, writing. From consolidated, so these other on here would have been from April. We have consolidated. Oh, yeah, oh, never mind, people theft, maybe I did, no, that's an electronic payment too, so.
So the city internet, we have two, ones at a hundred and fifty-eight, ones at two thirteen, obviously one city hall, one city shop.
Fire station.
Yeah, but it's fire station.
They got that broke down too.
That's a hundred and nineteen.
Oh, okay, I thought I was in the wrong line.
So that would be about right, because there is live internet up there, right?
Yeah. Get back into commercial. Structures. I guess if you, well, in your busy, hey, would you just double check to make sure that the tone chips prepaid us for the fire department expenses?
Was that the Decoria one?
All, I mean, just make sure that they all have reimbursed this fully. It doesn't look like maybe quite so far, but I, I don't, I don't remember the bill, so.
So.
So just make sure that Decoria and Lyra, Lyra, we're up it now, yeah, we're up it now.
They pay us one every quarter or?
I think every six, every half year.
Okay.
Twice a year normally.
Which line item is that under there, Tom?
Well, it's in revenues and. Fire Department reimbursed. We've been reimbursed forty thousand.
To date?
Yeah, yeah, to date.
So if you took.
And we have a sixty-three thousand dollar balance, you know, from the budget, so I just, just to be sure, just to follow up on that. And the reason I'm, I'm most concerned there is that former clerk sent a bill. You know what I mean, yeah, it would happen, it was so mixed up there that, we need to make sure that we're right now, so.
That was a forty-three hundred dollar one, right? Believe it?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. Yeah, make sure it works great now.
You, does, obviously the city should send out a bill, right?
We do, yeah, yeah, we do. But when, when they sent the check, though, she issued another bill back.
Right.
You know.
Have you ran across that all in there, John, and it'd be in the Banyan, right, Tom, or not?
I don't know, I don't know nothing about it.
Sure how that flows in either.
Just, just check on it.
Yeah.
Just make sure.
That one I'll have to look around on.
Well, actually, she issued a check back, that's what happened. We, we got a check. And then she issued the check back.
It was a revenue.
Yeah.
Us, but we paid it out as a bill to the other partner, or was it?
I think it was.
That I did check and that, that was voided.
Okay.
No, I don't think they were billed for service.
Okay, just make sure that all is happening. With obviously some confusion here.
And the pot machine money out here now goes under amusements, I believe it, is how it is put into the cities.
I think that's where it was designated, but.
And we're not even clear if we can take that money yet.
Well, that, that's just the revenue from the pot machine.
No, I know that.
And then that other four thousand or forty-two hundred is out there. Has never have been a motion made to accept that information?
The attorney, it's not sure we can, can accept that. Um. But I, I don't know about the pot machine money, that's the question maybe, Chris.
You know, maybe that's something that just needs, you know, we.
Goes into amusements, Jim, don't it? No, that's what I thought.
That's quarterly now. The rate, I don't know.
Right.
I think there was one in January that came. Remember, eighteen. It just went through my mind here that there's an issue with that whole system, and so we better make sure that we can actually take that money. And I don't remember how that all worked.
Well, we had a, in our packet two months ago, something about the pot machine and we never got that far that night to discuss.
Right, and we never really understood that.
Yeah.
But the whole problem is there. So.
And I don't. Remember where that money got put.
Before that, it got zeroed out from the new year.
Taken in last year?
Uh, that's, I don't know, that, that's a good question. I imagine it just got lost in general.
Well. Wouldn't it?
It would just. Everything, everything would have started new.
Yeah, it was just got lost in general, but it's there, I mean, it's not officially part of city money yet.
I guess maybe make a note there, John, and ask Kenny again.
Yeah.
What we should do with both, the money that's not been accepted by a motion, all and or all here. Well. Everybody had time enough to look through, or more time, Tom?
No, I think I'm okay.
All right, tell me, make a motion to approve the bills then.
You had some good discussion here, so.
Boo, Tom's the second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. All righty, Sheriff's Department. Did you have to call that?
Yeah, I, I left a message and emailed back shortly after, so.
How will, how will that work in the future?
I didn't talk to it, so I, it must be. There on our card, there was a a message line. I just left a message there and um.
Okay.
And, yeah, we got back pretty quick.
Well, we have fifty-one hours of service from the Sheriff's Department of the Welfare Check Disturbance Threat Complaints Suspicious Circumstance and Ambulance Sits. And then I see Phil got back to you too.
Yeah.
He had six calls, five medical and one vehicle accident. Any questions on either one of those? If not, we can move along to street update race.
I just called I just called Tom Walters again today about their cycle blacktop, and he said that he's hoping to get a load by the end of the week for us, so. That's finally coming so they can. Work on those roads again and hopefully get them back to good.
All right, anything else?
Uh, no.
Were you talking about the well or was Brian?
Yeah, Brian, are you under the well, man?
Yes.
Okay.
We defer to race.
Anything you see that needs noted to be fixed, you know, um?
Um, nothing that's overly pressing right now, I mean.
Is uh toilets up at the park? Are they up and going?
Yep, both there and.
Down there, okay. All right. Good deal. Um, I guess you might want to watch them every morning, especially these, to see if there's any uh vandalism down there. Do the cameras work down there yet?
Yep.
Okay, okay. All right. Nothing else, Tim? All right, well, update, Brian?
Uh, Tyne Well was here to do our annual well inspection. Race. Put them in and uh watched them do their thing and they exercised the wells. They did a drawdown. And they noted an issue with our old well, well one. I think there might be a hole in the casing. It's not uh. You can explain it whatever better than I can, because you explained it to me on the phone, how they ran it, and then they did the drawdown, and then it actually went up when we ran the other well. That.
With the so the there's that pressure gauge is right over the that well, where you turn it off, instead of holding pressure, it dropped to. Zero, which implies that there's a hole down there somewhere that. Want to get a know um and that along with that, uh, he said that that last time that that well was pulled. Was in twenty fall of twenty seventeen. That's the they're supposed to come up every five to seven years. So they said when they come, um, you kind of have them forever. They they know all the parts and everything that you can come on that, so they just bring everything. Every part of that well that would be on there, so whenever it goes out, they don't have to come back and or go somewhere else and get parts. They could just fix it and put it back in.
Yeah.
We told them to put it on the list to get her done.
Yeah, you need to get that done.
So if you'd use that well now pumping, Brian, would it pump a lot of sand or what would you pump dirt in or not?
No, it would just even pump water, but just that when the pump stopped running it.
Brings back down. Got more?
Um, you want me to do the water and wastewater stuff here?
You bet.
All right, good. All right, so I did the first discharge of the spring down at the wastewater treatment ponds. I let go of six point four million gallons. Um, our phosphorus number, uh, remember we are in the new permit now, so we have two hundred and twenty-seven kilograms of phosphorus that we can discharge in a year's time. Um, our first discharge, we had seventy-seven kilograms of phosphorus. That leaves us one hundred and fifty for the rest of the year. I just transferred and filled the secondary pond, and I'm gonna have to do another discharge. This one will be higher in phosphorus because the other water sat all winter long. So we're probably gonna use up that hundred and fifty easily, and we'll be pretty close to our permitted level. Um, if we have to do a third discharge in the fall, we have a wet summer, um. There's a possibility we may exceed that two hundred and twenty-seven. What I'm saying is time is now to take a hard look at what we're putting down the drain for. As far as our industrial users and our uh meat locker here in town, so um. Unless you want to just wait and deal with it later when you have a permit violation, so.
What happens if you go over that? Will we get fined?
Potentially, yeah. They can even pull your permit. They can do whatever they want because they they set the standard, so what it'll cause us to do, it'll pull the trigger. And we'll have to do chemical treatment. You'll see race in a motorboat on the ponds down there, reden alum or uh.
Uh, they did that years ago.
We call it pickle liquor. It's ferric chloride. It's iron to precipitate the phosphorus to the bottom of the ponds, and we do a discharge, so.
Would it ever hurt just to aerate that pond while it's sitting there?
No, it wouldn't be economical, and it wouldn't give them phosphorus.
Right.
Yeah.
That's gotta sink.
Yeah.
What produces the.
Phosphorus comes in from. Etergents and um blood, like from the meat locker. The two main things, detergents, like. They took it out of laundry soap many, many years ago, but it's still in dish soap, and it's still in uh. Um, things like you'd use to wash your car. Um, yeah. Times now, I'm just saying, uh, don't be surprised if this fall we run out of capacity and uh end up getting some warning letters or whatever comes along with in exceedance.
Well, why don't we do a little preempt here and get a hold of the engineer and let's get something going.
Yeah, what do you I mean, you're talking about probably legal things like having a significant industrial user agreement between the city and our. It's gonna affect Robert's truck wash. It's gonna affect. The meat locker, and it's gonna affect them negatively because they'll they'll either say they can't discharge water. Or they have to treat the water before they send it to the city's collection system or prove that there's no phosphorus in their water, and then they can be eliminated as a significant industrial user. But there's there's more to it than just saying stop doing that. You gotta actually have uh an agreement and uh uh a legal document that. Designates that as a SIG, so.
Only this time we'll do it.
Huh?
This time we'll do it right. Last time it was outrageously.
Oh, yeah, we were pretty generous. We were pretty generous with the last one.
I don't know where that number come from, but.
Yeah. What they're talking about, just so you folks know, is back when the treatment ponds were first put in back in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, somewhere in there. Um, they did identify the meat locker in town as a significant industrial user, but they gave them such a. Large, um. It was the B O D portion of the permit that was more than our whole pond's capacity was, so whoever wrote that in the beginning. Had made a big mistake. That permit has expired now. It's no longer in effect.
There's no in extension on or an increase on the our phosphorus level.
No.
That's all set by.
No, yeah, that's all set by the M P C A, yeah.
No, I think that we shouldn't have our engineer. Develop this for us. You know, I mean, it has to start somewhere, and I guess fair, you know? And maybe they can look at some other remediation.
Yeah, what they'll do is they'll set up sampling, and they'll sample different areas of town, narrow down where it's coming from, and then.
And in order to make it a legal document, we're gonna know have to know all that, you know, for sure, yeah, so.
So, yeah, cross your fingers and hope. I mean, if we can make it under two twenty-seven for the year, but I'm not optimistic about that.
About the uh, what does it cost to run a boat around and treat that? I mean, is that high price too?
A total, a three hundred and thirty gallon total ferric chloride is about a thousand buck, twelve hundred bucks. And then all the time, you really don't want to have him running around in a boat, huh?
Would that do the pond?
I don't know. I you'd have to calculate all parts per million, so that's.
But that is a question. What if it took ten gallons? We don't know.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I mean, I used to drag sulfuric acid around our ponds.
Mm-hmm.
Or to.
To raise the pH.
Yeah.
And you you met the the guidelines, eh?
Yep, so I mean, let's, that's why I'm thinking that we should entertain or en- engage the engineer to figure out, we should be looking at and ideas and doing it. Because we're gonna need to know all these things before we can legally tell any business that they have to treat. We have to be able to prove it, you know?
Hmm.
So.
So anyway.
So the the first one you were okay because it's that all winter.
The first one's always lowest in the spring because it's sad since last September, no, November.
So in other words, we'll get by the next time, chances are, but then that.
Yeah.
That third time.
Yeah.
Would be where we'd run into trouble, so. You know, I guess it wouldn't be a bad idea, just what that costs, how much how much product it would take.
Mm-hmm. Who's gonna do that study? I mean, we do it to get bold and make.
Yeah, I think our engineering firm.
Yeah.
And no, I mean, you you gotta have somebody that can sign off on the paperwork.
Yeah.
Who, John, to call Bolton and make and have him?
I would say that would if if, you know, you could do that, explain to them what we're talking about and looking at.
Maybe set up a meeting with what's his name, uh?
Jeff.
Jeff.
Thomas. He'll bring that other guy that does that, I'm sure, with him. I don't think Thomas is on top of that.
Yeah, I can provide him all the information for our phosphorus content for the last twenty years for our wastewater F line.
Yeah.
And um they can, they can see what the trends are. I. I've prepared a phosphorus management plan for the city for the last fifteen years, and um. I've got all that, all that trending, all that stuff, so if he wants a memory stick with that stuff on there to get started, I can take care of doing that, but.
How much was that phosphorus like a year ago and two years ago?
It's been all over the place, depending on um how much I N I we have, remember that, um.
But I thought that didn't dilute it.
It doesn't. It's whatever's there is there.
Yeah.
But you do get, when you do have I N I and you've got surface water coming in.
Yeah.
You've got everything in that that's the, you know, on people's lawns and.
That's what I just gonna say. If somebody fertilizes their lawn and it spreads into the gutter and it goes down.
Well, not that gets into.
Not the gutter.
Sanitary.
There.
Yeah. But anyway, okay, I don't need to beat that one anymore. Um. More importantly, um, I spent Sunday morning here. Your um. The city's. Permit with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is expiring at the end of the year, but we have to apply for a renewal one hundred and eighty days previous, which is June first. Um, these are the four pages. This is the municipal and industrial pond attachment, municipal surface water discharge application. Permit checklist for domestic wastewater and the transmittal form. The transmittal form is your application for permit renewal. I've got all this done. It's ready to mail. All I need is Robert's signature on. This second line right here, and then I can take this whole pile and give it to the acting clerk. I would suggest we send that in by certified mail. To get a receipt for it, and then there's a twelve hundred and fifty dollar fee for permit for uh application of the renewal of the permit. That should be everything that they need. If they need anything besides that, they will contact me if they needed some map or a drawing of the flow or anything like that, so.
Only one.
Or uh, just one signature, yeah, and then the the mailing address is on the oh.
Top corner?
Uh, no, it's on the one that says checklist. It's M P C A Fiscal Services, North Robert Street, St. Paul.
This is a yearly permit?
No, every six years.
Six. Well, Tom's taking a minute. Look at that down there. Race went down there Saturday night, you know, when we had that alarm. That is a two pump stream four on the like the north side of the thing.
That just mirrors the panel.
The the uh quotes are entangled down there.
Yeah, I think.
They're they're pulled through up through the loop.
Yeah, I think.
So there isn't a high and there isn't a low. They're both laying on the bottom.
Yeah.
Because number four won't run on auto, but it runs on manual.
Yeah, that's goofy. They need to be maybe shorten up them loops and raise raise them up a bit.
Well, equivalent to the other side or not, probably less.
Higher.
Higher, yeah.
You'd want them higher because you don't want the big pumps to kick in unless the little pumps become overwhelmed.
Yeah.
But I seen that tonight. I actually went down there and I pulled them up and looked them over because they were jangled up again.
Yeah, because race knocked off a bunch of.
Yeah.
Stuff.
They're all snarled around. Yeah, that's no, that's no good.
No.
Um, so, yeah, I'd say shorten up them loops, maybe some more. Instead of zip ties, maybe some kind of clamp on there or something or.
Well, you got a good grip on a zip tie. It should be good.
Yeah.
But I didn't have.
They need to come up a bit.
Yeah.
Where the framework is.
Yeah, that would be because of the check.
So that they can do their floating, you know.
Yeah.
Sure, and so if you got time and you want to go down and don't fall in there. I don't want to. I'm scared. I I don't even like leaning over that hole because if you fall in, no one's gonna. No one's gonna know.
Swim out to the lagoon.
You're tall enough. Yeah, I built the same ones.
Yeah, so um, that's the. I N I wise, yeah, we're still getting it. I over the last couple of days, we had the big thing, well, I got over a hundred thousand gallon service to explore it.
Yeah.
It seems to drop off faster now, and it's not as bad as it used to be, but it's still there.
So you got a hundred thousand like Saturday after Saturday afternoon, we got that.
Saturday.
But you make it up.
But then it went right down to get on Monday?
Uh, it's coming down.
Coming down.
A hundred and like a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and sixty thousand, and then it comes down to about a hundred and eighties.
Really? It should be pulling some net. Out of the if you got those uh measuring things.
But, oh, yeah, 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 they've got those monitoring flow meters and all those.
He's coming. They always coming once a week.
Yeah. I've got an I N I study going on right now, so I must spend the week.
It sounds like there's a week.
Afternoon.
Yep.
And so the water filter in the wellhouse over there, the check valve is also bad.
Yeah.
I've I've got communication with James. They had me measure it up, and they they ordered a new check valve. But in between cycles on the filter over there, the water just backfills slowly fills it up, goes out the overflow that I and I. It goes right this one or all right to sanitary sewer. That's another sort of, yeah.
Yep.
Water flow.
So that's what's happening with the it leaking like that.
Okay, that could be listed, that could be added to the I N I list that the water filter at the wellhouse overflows and.
Who took these photos?
Race did.
Oh. You're running on borrowed time there.
I know.
Bill. That's why it's running out the front door, then I take it?
That's from inside. That's why I had him take the picture.
Here, yeah.
Um, I I had race open up the hatch and take some photos and to see where that water's coming out the top of the filter there and the. Things since he rode as a tenant, the tenant's shot, uh, the header up above that sprays water into the trays is shooting all over the place.
You know, like this pipe has been replaced, I know, in the last fifteen years, that main pipe there, you know?
Up inside?
Yeah, it's inside. Why wouldn't we just spend more money and have it made out of stainless and be done with it?
Yeah, why didn't they? I don't know.
I mean, yeah, it's gonna cost three times more than metal, but you'll never do it again.
Uh-huh.
It's done. You know, I don't know if mine works with stainless.
I don't think time would do it. That's the well company. You need some kind of fabricator.
I think uh. Javons might.
Maybe.
Javons might.
Yeah.
So I, because I mean, here's another one that's been welded upon and welded upon. Some of them should be just fixed before they break. And you have to live with it. Friday afternoon, no break guaranteed, and I mean, water spraying all over. You know, that's the one down below there where that stand is.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, so should we call Javons and see if they can make these pipes out of stainless?
Can.
I mean, yeah, it's gonna cost three times more than a piece of iron.
Yeah, how much money do you want to put into that old dog? It's it's at the end of its life.
That's right, but this isn't. This is, you know, this is coming out of the ground, you know?
Uh-huh.
The belving and the piping, we won't ever have to just maintain them, right?
Right.
But this here. All this here stuff, yeah, this has definitely come to its life.
Yeah, that's a nightmare.
Yep.
Like the leg tights.
I think I can hold on that door when you open that too. So you're not careful to lose that door.
Well, we can't do nothing with that until we get Bolton and make out too, right? Have an engineer it.
They're supposed to be kind of working on that right now already.
Well, that's why I know. I thought maybe they'd be here tonight, but.
They should have been probably invited them, but. We need to talk about it too.
Okay, anything else, I'm right?
Uh, no, sorry for all the bad news, but uh the the permit renewal is a good thing. If you can get that mail like soon as possible, do you got a copy of this or? What says to make a copy and keep for a have electronic copies of all of that, you know, you know, and then.
So and you said it's due by June first?
Yeah, yeah, but I wouldn't wait. I'd pop that in the mail tomorrow.
Well, I need, you're gonna bill us, we need to send a check with it.
Send a check with it for twelve hundred and fifty bucks or whatever it says on that transmitter form.
We need to, is that in the bills? I don't remember.
I don't think so.
Probably not. If it's not, we need to add that.
If it's not, we need to add that into the bills. I don't think that on there, that's a move that you can write a check for. That's the first you heard of that twelve fifty for that John, right?
No, I told them a couple of days ago.
Well, yeah, but I didn't have the forms and.
But is it in the bills already?
No, no.
So we need to.
You'll see, I, I have it. We're probably gonna have to have another special meeting probably beginning next week so I can. Cause I wanna have more build.
Yeah.
I have more bills to do that are gonna need to go off before.
We need to send this off immediately. We just wanna make sure we can add this long into the bills this tonight. And so I'll make that motion that we add, oh, okay, added into the bills tonight. I made a motion to add that additional twelve fifty to the state of Minnesota, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, someone the second?
I'll suck.
All papers say hi.
Hi.
I oppose, motion carried. Alrighty, um, that hit them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, down to community comment? Anybody? Comments?
We're talking about that a little more now. Everything that we went through last week, I've got ready to go, so. Priority tomorrow is gonna get the payroll out. And then hopefully I'll have it to the messenger repress on the cog website. By Wednesday this week, someone read that ballpark.
It's under our new business. And, and, but we put it on a bulletin board.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause the last time you guys were back both leaving Minnesota cities, Minnesota. Website, you're not putting them on those?
Yeah, yeah. Try to do the MSU, the main, hit the main ones first, you know, and um. But it's also a good time of year for like, South Central, especially to your college graduates, so.
So we can hang these two on the bulletin board at any time now then?
Yeah.
We've got, we've got to decide on pay, that's enough.
Anybody else?
Uh, do we know what the uh, the new automotive month's old place? We assume it's gonna be a mechanic shop. Do we know that yet?
Yeah, I believe that's what it is.
Mechanic or body shop?
I think a mechanic. But he, from what I was told, he's. Gonna like sublease the body part to another guy to just paint.
Gonna be a little bit of both, I guess.
You know.
All right. Anybody else with questions? Anybody up there joined on or?
Yeah, it looks like a couple. I think I have it going anyway.
Well, if there's no further questions, then we can move on to unfinished business. Uh, citywide cleanup is scheduled for June seventeenth at eight till noon. Stickers are purchased at city hall and are needed for a drop off. Prices are. Appliances, electronics, forty bucks, large console TV eighty, tires seventeen to forty-five.
Yeah.
Wow.
If there's a wheel and.
Where mom, oh yeah. Boy, that's really went up, I believe in it. I'm sure it all went up, everything else in this world went up.
But they bring drop stickers off, yeah?
Yeah.
So anybody that wants to go down there has to get a sticker.
With.
For these, for these things, right?
Right, yeah. Anything else should be.
Yeah, and are we gonna have a individual down there? Kind of verifying their city residence?
I think we have to. There's, I mean, there's a lot of new residents. We don't, praise don't know them and uh. You might wanna, other places down there, you check licenses. I, I think Lira Township does. They check driver's license. How many states down there, so whoever's gonna have to be.
That's something we wanna do. Check license? We have to have a motion on that to check license, to instruct them to check license?
Well, there's already people bringing garbage into town.
You hear of this in other towns, Tom, or?
Yeah, but it always runs into trouble because there's always people that own businesses and properties in town that don't have a Good Thunder address. You know, Mapleton address or they have, you know what I'm saying? And Cato address, so you gotta be a little bit open to discussing what the situation is.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it just, it would.
It is, you can't just make a motion. It says if you don't have a good thunder address, you can't dump because that's not. People that are way far away out of town have good thunder addresses.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's.
Have to say residents.
Yeah. Be a resident. It would be better if they would bring a, a water bill.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's what Mankato does. They bring a water bill or a postcard or something.
Oh, really?
I think, I think.
Now they gotta prove that they're a resident.
Yeah, I think so. They used to, yeah, I believe that's what they do.
Is that something we wanna look at doing?
We got, I would think so. I mean, it just.
We'll have one more meeting before we have that cleanup days.
I mean, we know we get stopped down the brush piles from out of town and. They dump in the dumpster on the ball diamond too. Water bills aren't due till May twenty fifth, so everybody's got theirs at home yet.
Hmm.
I do. Right? So, I mean, that would be the easy way to do it.
Yeah.
Bring, just bring the water bill card. That's pretty much proof then. I don't know who we, that, I can't think of an example on hand anyway.
I'd probably be better than asking for license. To people that ain't law enforcement, if you shouldn't have to.
Something to verify the. The town, some proof of resident.
Would you be down there that day, Tom, or not?
I don't think so.
No. Going camping, yeah.
I might. I don't know what day that even, what day, when is that?
Seventeen.
Team.
That's gonna be next week.
No, it's June.
Oh, June.
Oh.
I don't know.
It's raining, won't be camp.
Last time I was down there, but they went and dumped, dumped the truck, so I wasn't there, you know, for.
Would we just run that by Kennedy if that would be a way to do that? I mean, I hate spending money on.
Do it, you know?
Post it in the paper to make sure anybody or resident of Good Thunder, bring you along your verified.
Water bill.
Just bring the water bill.
Yeah. Or prove the address of your license actually has the city good. If you, yeah. Like mine says, eight oh one Sherman, Good Thunder, you know.
The city limits, so don't you wanna word it so that it's the city limits of Good Thunder?
A resident, resident of the city.
The city, yeah.
Like your water bill or your license, or whatever.
Some proof is. Whatever, you gotta have something because I know that you're gonna have people. That'll cut down. Lira has, has people coming in trying to dump.
So what, what happens? They, they, LJP turns them away then?
Yeah.
Then you know where it's gonna go?
Well, usually down there already. They have a representative of the city down there that does all that checking.
Yeah.
Cause those employees are not cops. You know, they're not policemen.
You think you could be down there that day, Chris?
I should, should work.
Okay. Try to plan it then, so you could be down there that day for them, odd hours or whatever. All right, that take enough, take care of all that.
It's at Thunder Valley Park again, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Cleanup business, we can move on to uh, new business, food shelf discussion. Uh, we made a motion last month to set it down because of the variance of hours of a city clerk. Of course, we're under great scrutiny by individuals for doing that. I may wanna add how we should do that for the next.
Maybe somebody in the town wants to donate their something so that they can have it open. I mean, I, I don't know.
Well, the big, you're gonna have somebody here when it's open.
Or.
So I mean.
What's up gets moved to a location that somebody is willing to, to monitor it or to keep it open for a, for a resident in need. Until you find a clerk.
One of, one of the churches.
Yeah.
Maybe the daycare church.
What was that, Brad?
Maybe one of the churches like Loews and Fishes and Mapleton does. They kind of manage it and take care of it with that, you know, trainer.
Was it put out that Loews and Fishes is also part of our area too, so that it's not just taking it out of.
No.
You're giving it to another community that.
Anybody in the area can go over that.
Yeah.
They're open what, four to seven Tuesday night and Saturday too.
Kids that are getting out of school and are hungry. They can't walk to.
Well, then we were scrutinized by the public. Does the public wanna step forward and run it for us?
Where would you suggest?
I guess we could keep it right in here then. You know, we have cameras.
Okay.
Um.
So it would be a matter of just making sure it's organized and out of date food taken out and things like that.
I guess so, yeah. I mean, I don't know how the, how the, how it was brought in.
Yeah, I don't have no idea either.
People just kind of dropped things off. And Ashley put them in there.
Yeah, so. I mean, uh, would you as yourself come up once every morning or at noon and anything down there put on the shelves? Uh, would you ever have another camera put inside so nobody can vandalize anything?
You almost gotta have somebody here if you're walking in the building.
Yeah, I know, but you would, if five people walked in in that hour time and somebody vandalized it, you wouldn't know what are them five people who did that. But is there?
One outside at one point in time?
There still are.
Oh, there is still one that actually sits outside?
There's one right there.
Oh, she man.
No, the, no, the, the food, there used to be a.
Oh, yeah, it used to be outside, yeah. I think it was brought in during the winter months.
So is that something that could be brought back out and there's a camera there? I mean, I don't know.
I guess, you know what? That's a good point. We could bring it back out for summer months. It was taken in because of freezing canned corn.
Hmm.
Where it froze up and busted the can, so that's a good point.
It may have to go in if it gets extremely hot. We don't want a can of tomato soup blown up.
Is, is there a camera that?
No, none, it's right above the door outside.
So it shows everybody come in?
Yeah.
So that's your camera, that's your proof.
Yeah, but like I said, if five people came in in an hour. And somebody vandalized it, nobody ever said anything, you wouldn't know what are the five people who did it. So.
I don't know how active it was with, it was active. It was, yes, daily. When the, especially when some of the kids got out of school.
So is it something that somebody from the community would wanna monitor for an hour or so at the end of the day of school? I don't know. I mean, it kinda seems like that's, is that kinda where the need is?
I guess, you know, um, we just figured, and I guess we figured wrong as usual, that since we didn't have a clerk and John's busy taking care of. Past and present business, that, you know, he would probably be overwhelmed with that. But since the public made an outcry, the public can help maybe take care of it then.
Could there perhaps be more than one person taking care of it?
Yep.
I mean.
Is there a way to put something on the Good Thunder website? That says exactly what you're saying, you know, is there a community, is there certain people that are willing to help? Keep this for the interim until a new city clerk is hired.
Is the community page, who's the, was it an author? Who, who, who has the authority to put on that now?
On the city website?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
So, uh.
Well, there's also a base book, isn't there, city?
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't gotten. Let me see if I can.
So I mean, is everybody in favor of trying to reopen it? Um.
As long as it's taken care of, I mean, that's fine, but. Yep.
It would take a, it would take a week to get it filled back up, so there's product in there. I have no.
The word out that we need product.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's the cabinet? Is it out?
There are three cabinets in there now. It was.
In there?
Yeah. There was just that plastic one outside, right? Now it's wooden ones in here. You put them in there, Jim?
Yeah.
Is the plastic one children?
I think it is.
I know the, the Mapleton food shelf has a new manager, Steve Ryder, who's a great guy. You guys wanted to make contact with him, if you ended up taking out, he may actually be able to get you food as well. Cause sometimes they have too much food over there.
Okay.
And they can't, they actually don't have enough people to give it away to, so. Whoever does get into that.
That was, that was in your lot. The guy that took that over, he was in the last, your last edition of the paper, right?
Yep, okay.
Let's come and turn. Alrighty, any other uh, questions on the food shelf discussion then? Uh, we put it on the website so we can get.
I'll try to draft something up, yeah, and put on the city website and then, whatever I put on there, I can post at the post office too. For community.
Do you two gals know people that would wanna help out?
I will help, but I don't wanna be committed to it seven, there are five days a week anyway. I mean, if it was something that there were enough of this, that one or two days a week you came up. I would be more than willing to help out.
Well, I think that even like Mapleton, it's only open two days a week, right? An evening and a Saturday.
You know.
That's it.
I thought about, you know, it could be locked up at night at some time. Race could open it up every morning. And Race makes enough time traps back here doing whatever, mowing or whatever. People could keep an eye on it also a little bit. And some people would wanna lock it up at eight o'clock at night. You know, it's daylight now and pretty lo- long. So we get it back up, or if there's individuals in need, we have it there for them.
Well, you know what? If we can just get a few people that are willing to drag past when they go up to get their paper. I mean, you're already in the car, you've gone to the post office, go home, pass.
Maybe all them people that are on Facebook scrutinizing our closure of it will be the volunteers of it.
I haven't been on Facebook.
Me neither, but I was told that. That would be.
And help out them.
All right, well, we'll see if we can get it up and going, see if we can get some help. All right, thank you. Uh, the vacancy, uh, John, you wanna add to what?
Yeah, so. Maybe I just think of myself and copies. The, um, when we went over last month, that, that notice, the short notice, they have the one that Tom got up for.
This one?
Yeah, that one, that will be the advertisement for the paper and messenger, um, you don't have them. But we just need to, we never finished the loop on the question of the salary range. I had written down up to thirty-two, that would be like, you know, college graduate with experience. But what, what did we wanna set that beginning range at? And so I guess, I don't know if we actually have to advertise that, but people wanna know what the, that range is too.
I just forgot to ask you about this. Did you ever call the tech college or the college and see if they had some interns for the?
I, I have never gotten to that yet.
Okay. I don't know if that would be a possibility for a while too, you know, until we get the position filled to have somebody out of the.
It might be, we still need to post this though.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, depending on, on abilities, um.
Well.
If we were to attract someone who actually has the college and comes with a Minnesota certified municipal first. Certification, certification. It might be worth more than thirty-two.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if you look at it that way. Cause it takes all that misery out of, you know, leading up to that. Or we could just have it advertised that it's negotiable based on experience and education. I agree with you, though. It'd be nice to have a. A range.
A range in there, you know, a range.
I'm just gonna throw this out there, twenty-eight to thirty-five. Maybe that's too much of a range, maybe.
About twenty-six to thirty-two.
Cause like I said, if, if you get, if you attract someone who has all of these qualifications already. A lot of the misery we've gone through would not have gone through.
Yeah.
So, you know. Especially if there's somebody, you know, to, since we won't get anybody out of Mankato. People in Mankato don't wanna drive out of town when they don't have to, but.
Right.
I mean, we couldn't pull somebody from Mapleton or like Crystal or, you know, surrounding community that, you know.
Or someone that's in Mankato that works in town or in Mankato but lives in town.
Right, exactly, yeah.
But they don't have to drive.
I know two people locally that are interested in this job. So, you know, things are looking up. Their ability, don't know. Thirty-two hours a week, we'd still leave it at that?
Yeah, and that, you know, maybe it is something we go full time, you know, it's it. But I would, I think, starting out with that, it's a thirty-two hour position week. And that's, that can be something that can be discussed during the interview, you know, there.
Would you put, well, they'd look underneath here, I mean, we have reimbursement for phones. Right? And then as far as healthcare. We've done something for there too, right? So that would all be in here when they come to.
Then that will be part of the package. I think just for this exercise here, we just need to set some sort of a range so that. I mean, people want to know, you know, what is the range and, you know.
What, do you want to make your range motion?
I'll do that.
All right.
Twenty-six to thirty.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight to.
Thirty-two or thirty-five, twenty-eight to thirty-five.
I made the motion, someone second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, both, okay.
And thirty-five thousand. About thirty-five dollars. When it no, it's an hourly position, an hourly position, sorry, I should have. At least it is today. With the right candidate, though, you know, it could change.
All right, anything else about the posting then, John?
Nope, I should do it. Hopefully that will be out midweek.
All right. Uh, COVID state. Fiscal recovery fund report due April thirtieth is.
So, that that was an email I got, I checked the, if we got COVID relief money, he said yes. I just, so this, it's an online report, I looked at it a little bit today. We don't have any, I don't know how much money we got or when we got it. Basically, are there any projects going on that we're we're using COVID money for? Or do we have any unspent COVID money, or does anybody have any idea even how much we got, when we got it?
That's a Burkhard question, yeah. And you know, they should be able to tell you what line item it's under too, right? In the revenue side?
Yeah, what I just asked and all he said was yes, so I thought, oh, I don't know me either, so, but okay, I'll I'll follow up with them.
So this would have come from the US Department of Treasury? I mean, that would have been dated, how far back does this go? It could have, due date was the thirtieth.
Due date was, that was just for this recording. I'm assuming there was one done with previous year too. Well, that's when I printed, this was the second notice came in, you know, so. Okay, I'll follow up with Burkhard.
Because you'd have to, uh. I have no idea what we ever got. Does anybody? So I guess, you know, they could go back in the records and see at what date we received what amount of money. Then you could go to that line item and see what's been spent out on that. I don't know what even fell under the guidelines that.
I have no idea what we would even gotten any COVID money.
They shouldn't have.
I think there's about sixty-two thousand dollars in that COVID fund yet, just so you know.
Sixty-two thousand, how much do you get to start with, you know?
We, we got a large amount, they got paid out, and then we got another amount that they based off population, and that came last year.
All right. Okay, moving on to farm water.
Yeah, so Race brought this to me the other day, so is this something we do billings for when?
Um, there was an individual coming got water, and I told Race he didn't know. I took the meter off last fall before it froze, he didn't know nothing about our water sales. And then I started a new sheet, well, this is back from, uh, um, October here. There's about three hundred, four hundred, two hundred bucks, four hundred bucks worth of water sales here that we bill out for.
So I need to do two billings to the Hugo and. Whatever.
Yes, Brett, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, two billings, yeah.
And what, what is that, at five cents a gallon like we do for swimming pools?
Yep, yep, yep. And now, I see down here below in miscellaneous RNG construction is, uh.
They they called asking today about that still.
Are they all right with five cents? Because we've caught in heck that we're way too high, well, you know, we're not pumping water for free.
I I did not, I didn't go there, I had no idea how to answer, she didn't even know how many gallons at first, I said. You got to give me some some idea on how many gallons you're talking about, so she came back with eighteen thousand. And I don't, that's a lot of water to me, I don't know if we want to, would even want to.
Well, we did a lot more than that out here east of town when they redone the highway out here, a lot more. So in reality, this isn't that much.
Okay, yeah, she said, because she said they pay, so, um. Okay.
On the eighteen thousand.
County road ninety, that could be closer to go to Mankato and drive all the way to here.
They probably have to get into town too far.
Well, they just raid in off Stolzman Rogers. They might be charging more there though, too, for all we know.
All right, so I'll tell them that's a goal. And, you know, like you say, I have to build these two people out. And just write a note in there, sorry, got for forgotten. And, uh.
So then, then where's the fill station for that? That's over by the.
Right in front of my shop.
And so when this RNG construction comes by, they just fill up the same thing?
Yeah, but it's it's hanging there and then enclosed clipboard. Each time people are supposed to write down what they take.
Okay, so that's a goal.
And there's a meter on there, start in the end, and that tells you the gallons.
Then Burkhard, Burkhard, that was just, I just wanted to say that they assisted in getting the first quarter nine forty-one out and the, um. Um, all the tax reporting done, so they came out on the twenty-eighth, so that's all that, I was just going to let everybody.
All right. Uh, miscellaneous building, building permit?
They have two there, one.
Is there just one?
Dylan and John, you know, right there.
Oh, okay, there you go. Have you read up on this kind of stuff, Race, to?
Dylan. Has, where he's putting them, two egressors already, them two short windows. Basement, what are they like?
Face themselves, obviously.
There's out them, he's going to put them in the exact same spot as them, but it's just got to go down another three feet, make it the true egress. And he's going to put as well.
That should be no problem. It'll be okay, it looks.
Or Dylan?
Everybody else good with that? Somebody want to make a motion to approve GT twenty twenty-three one and twenty twenty-three two?
We'll move.
I'm on the second. I'll second. All in favor, say aye. I hold, motion fair. Okay, M and M Insurance.
So they reached out, um. Before, last week. But they wanted us to review our policy info. Because I believe this is coming up for renewal. I believe it was in June. And I don't know if that's something everybody just needs time to review or. Yeah, because I I'm not familiar with a lot of this stuff, so. Like a lot of the, um, maintenance buildings and all that. It's, it's the values and stuff of it all.
This is maybe really stupid, because I've never really looked at it this way before, but. In the description on the second page, it says off sale liquor. Year old fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty, that's something to do with the fire department. Why it wouldn't, wouldn't be off sale liquor, I want to get, that would be gambling or something, you know, or.
Maybe that's where it goes back on the municipal liquor story.
Well, I'm wondering.
That's how many years ago?
Well, wait, well, before I come.
And I don't think elected official or appointed officials. Are they, do they put departments in there?
Pointed with the like us and feed assistant chief. I don't know if it amounts to that much, but maybe it does.
Well, I don't think it's quite that high, would be.
This one.
Elected appointed officials. Says there would only be the five on council, and there'd be the two on the fire department, right? Chief and assistant chief.
You wouldn't think it'd be that much, no, I don't, I I guess I would ask that question too, where'd that number come from? Maybe it is, but I don't recall.
Or the pounding all the firefighters on there. No, that's down below there. Well, yeah, maybe.
Maybe, it says population two thousand, so.
And the liquor store, and that's the off sale, that's what the deal.
Yeah, that, that, that's, I didn't even look at that.
And then the park, did you get that shit on when to go? Why would the park be?
Not in that one, it's the next. This email, this email here.
This one?
Yeah, I can get clarification from around those three for sure.
And that's why we send it out, so we can look at it and ask questions and whatnot.
They want the values of the truck and that, uh. They really want values of our buildings and everything, is that on the back page?
Seven eleven Charlotte Restrooms, forty-four thousand dollars.
Well, it's just like City Hall, this building is not worth four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I don't quite. What does that mean, the building limit? Is that the limit that they'll pay on all claims, you know, and? Ability claims or whatever? I don't know what that means. Well, they're going to come, I would assume they're going to come when they renew and explain all this anyway, so.
They got the two generators at forty-nine thousand dollars a piece, is that?
Thousand, where you see that? Yeah, I see that.
Forty-nine thousand dollars a piece. The concession stand is worth a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and some odd dollars.
See, I don't know whether that, what that means though, I mean, is the limit, the limit is.
That, that I would say would be furnishings inside, you know. Yeah, that's what I mean.
But does limit mean liability limit or that? I mean, I don't know.
Oh, the house we own in five thirty is two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
That doesn't make any sense. I mean, if that's what it means.
So you only did a, ask about what the building and content limits?
Yeah, what is that, what do those numbers mean?
I think they got all the fire equipment pretty decent here. But then.
I think that's including the two sitting vehicles too, though, right?
Well, I was looking for that, and, uh, no, I don't believe, well.
Yeah, there's a four fifty.
Yeah, there's a four fifty there, but there isn't, uh. Oh, the dump truck is in there, yeah. But the lawnmower isn't in there. Would that go under the content of the building? Because it don't have a license plate? A tractor ain't in there.
Fire department grass room, that's not a three fifty either. I think just.
Well.
I'm glad they sent it, so we can ask the question.
Yeah, I guess so, because there's some stuff that's kind of alone. I'll reach out for.
I mean, it would seem that con system would be worth more than two and two point six million too. You think, you'd think that'd be worth more. That's like a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for that building. Just the structure.
Well, I guess we're just going to have to kind of put this on the back burner and get more updates on. That okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, then we'll move on to, well, RNG Construction asks for water request for milling, and we discussed that already. Uh, special meeting, additional bill approval.
Yeah, like, once I get some more done, because we're going to have to get some more out before the next meeting in June, so. Um, I don't know if you want to set something now, it would, it'll be really quick, but it will just be to have everybody approve.
Did you get that Mike Hummel involved then in?
Uh, the position? Not not yet, not till we, not till, once I get it advertised, then I'll reach out to him, um. Um, so, because he was helping with interviews, right, and selection, okay, yeah.
Is that the way we want to proceed this time, is have him involved?
I think so.
I think so, to get background checks and stuff like that.
He did a good job on all that.
Okay, um, now we're down to an easement survey, legal recording water lines for marine. Spear domestic water lines at eight oh five, eight fifty, Hiller Drive, rain is here tonight.
Yeah, I ran into a couple of roadblocks again over there, um. I am trying to get the property right. And I'm working with a couple of contractors, I'm trying to figure out where I can put my new garage. Which I'd like to have up and built before the snow flies. appraisal services out of Mankato is telling me until we can determine where the water lines are located with the domestic water from Chapel Street to my property. They cannot give an accurate appraisal. And I've been in contact with Bolton and Meek as well. And they are telling me that. To get an easement, like I'm, because my water lines are under private property. Which is now owned by Robert. I need to get an easement. From Chapel Street to my Hiller Drive property line. And. The issue I'm running into is. Bolton and Meek is telling me when the city approved the domestic water line back forty years ago or whenever. Um, at that time, an easement should have been granted. To, from Fishers or whoever owned that property at the time. Because anybody that runs, well, my house and then Aaron Barnard. Because anybody that runs, well, my house and then Aaron Barnard next to me to the east. My understanding, he has a separate um domestic water line from chapel to his place too. Um, there should have been an easement put in place back then. And. Appraisal Services will not give me an accurate appraisal for the property. Until I get that resolved and Bolton and Make. They can't even come out here to, it has to be surveyed and then a, like a plot map drawn up. Of where the domestic water lines are located and then it's gonna have to go to a real estate attorney to get. To make sure that the easement is drawn up properly and then recorded with the county. Um, I have a call in um. To Lance Love Lover Nick from Rural Water Association. I'm waiting to hear back from him. Um, there was nothing put in the lines um back when those water lines were put in. For anybody to go back now to try to figure out where those lines run. And that's where I'm running into the problem because I can't get an appraisal. And Bolton and Make, they want. They want two thousand dollars to come out here to do a survey from Chapel Street to the north end of my property. They won't even come out and do the survey. Until I get something in writing from Robert. Giving them permission to even go on his land to do the survey.
So what happened forty probably years, forty plus years ago? When Conley Hiller lived in the house to the east and Urban Fisher lived in the one to the west. They both had their own wells. I can remember I watched Conley Hiller dig them lines across the field with a backhoe. Men himself. And uh. Do you remember when that would have been? It's gotta be the early seventies, mid seventies. So, in reality, he would have almost had to ask the city for permission to tap into those city water main. So, but since he owned the property on one side and Urban owned it the other, they were all happy because they were the owners. But now that this is all switched hands. Um, you got private water lines running over other people's properties. So I think the only way it can be. Fixed is by putting a easement through there. So she can move forward to get an appraisal. And uh, I mean. There's a number of other private lines, right, that run around town?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
A lot of them are down streets, though, I mean.
Obviously, this happened without question years ago.
Yep.
But now this raises a new question, so we have to address it.
Property, it wasn't disclosed to us because there was no record through the county that there was an easement. Um, we were just told we're on city water and sewer, but the sewer line that goes on the south end of my house to the east. That also does not have an easement and that was private property that that sewer line, to my knowledge, got put on as well.
It came up the street though, right?
Is it on the street or?
Yeah, it's in the street, right?
No, it's in the street.
Yeah, there's a manhole up there on the end of your property somewhere.
I'm wondering why. They would have put the sewer that way, but the domestic water to the north, why wouldn't they have tapped into?
There was no water down to that close.
At that time?
Yeah.
At that time, yeah.
So it was a matter of where the water was in the city.
And they own land. And they own the land.
No.
It's pretty much the same.
That Bolton and Meek can both.
And see them two water lines there. Same guy she's talking about.
For paying for something that I I would be.
Yeah.
But he can come in.
If something went wrong with those domestic, that domestic line. I couldn't even have a contractor come in and.
No, I understand that, yeah. That's something between you and Robert, so you gotta get these. Permission from him or already write it up.
Contact base.
They will be. Between Robert and I, it has to go through an engineer. It has to be surveyed and it has to be registered with the county.
Whatever it takes, yeah, but I mean, it doesn't really have the city involved with it. That's what it is.
The attorney from Ferris Johnson, it is the city's.
Down the road, there'll be an issue there.
Because they are the ones that approved.
Not really, because if Paul.
But it was their property.
Matter, but it's down the road, you know.
Then it, then it should have been disclosed or an easement should have been. Approved at that time.
Yeah, they don't have that sewer line coming up to that up Marines gold deck. That ends.
That's not business, right, Robert?
It ain't, no, no, well, here's the sewer here. That's all water, yeah, here's the sewer here. But it comes farther than this, all right? Yeah, the sewer comes up past here, right? Cause Urban hooked up to it.
Right, so it's be right up in the house.
Yeah, there's a manhole somewhere in the street.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what they're saying if this gets redone.
But they wanna restart, resurvey. My property when I already had the pins there, cuz it was surveyed when I bought it.
They want. They want to just survey to locate the domestic water lines. They're not doing the whole partial. Just the area where the domestic water lines are, but they, nobody knows exactly where they are located.
Not within a couple of feet, no, but the water shut offs are on that. And they go right out to the corner of the property lines. Your fence makes a. Water goes right there and then they separate going both ways.
Oh, he hasn't written any record of that, Rob.
It was private property.
But what I'm seeing is it's been sold.
Yep.
Prior.
Yeah, but that's.
You know.
So I will look at, it wasn't, if the city wasn't involved with it.
Forty years ago when they allowed this.
We had, had to have been involved as a city.
Because the city would have had to have gotten, yes, I understand that it's, it was privately owned.
Yeah.
Mine and then I believe the Hillers owned the stuff to the east. But still at that time. An easement should have been drawn up, giving the city permission to put that water line in, is what Bolton and Make and the appraisal services is telling.
Yeah, I just. Well, there would have had to have been some kind of permission to tap in as a city's water.
And also, I don't think the city is aware that on my property line, there was a spigot. Um, like ten feet from the house. And we always just assumed it was attached to our. Water meter. But last fall. This is how we realized that it was not attached to our meter, is there was water bubbling up underneath that pump. And so we had to figure out. What was causing that? So George went out there, we had four septic come and dig it up and. That is attached, it was attached to the domestic water line coming to the property. However, the city did not. Have that tied into the house. So any water that was being used out of that spigot for, I don't know how many years. The city was taking a loss on the water.
So any outside watering coming out of that spigot did not get.
That's correct.
Meters.
And now it's capped off. We took, we removed it and capped it off. It's no longer there, so there's, but I just. I'm just letting the city know that all these years, any water that was used out of that was not being built back to the homeowner.
That wasn't coming out of the old pump yet.
Pardon me?
Wasn't come out of the old well yet, was it?
No, it was tied to the city water cuz we had raised, shut it off.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there, yeah.
Because that's, we didn't know where it was coming from either. And so he showed us where the boxes were and and he was down at one end and we were talking to him by cell phone and trying to figure out. You know, what was, what was hooked to what?
Well, what do we do? We get a hold of our attorney to see if we are.
Yeah, I think I'm just thinking.
Have to do it, yeah.
To do.
Can't jump off the cliff.
No. Do we have our city engineers go through there and make an easement?
Let's find out.
Let's find out.
The legal end of it. We have legally.
Yep.
As a city.
And make sure we include that it happened forty plus years ago.
Oh, you know, tell them what's, what's happening, yeah, that's. Yep.
Cuz. I mean, I would like to just say that, you know, that was like an omission, omission years ago or whenever, but.
That was probably great and fine.
I'm not so sure it really was an omission because it still is a private line. Period. And so. What? What do we have to do with that private line? Um, if there was something that was supposed to have taken place then. Is a private line, we don't need a an easement for. The city does not need an easement for a private line. There's no reason for us, it's private. But. Maybe there was something that should have taken place and that's what we need to find out.
Yeah, that, we got.
Cause it's been sold. Was cuz, cuz Peters owned it, correct, at one time or no? They owned the partial that you bought. You didn't buy that off Fisher, did you? You bought that off Peters?
No, I I bought that, which one?
Your land, yeah.
Your land that I, the water line is.
North of there. I bought that from Fishers.
You bought that from Fishers?
Yep.
So.
Fisher's always owned um from this corner down here. Urban always owned that, two point seven three acres or whatever. So he owned that, like I say, if Conley was. Putting that in there years ago, if he put it right down the center. Urbans could have been on Urban's property and Hillers could have been on Hillers property and there was nobody to. Worry about it cuz it was all both on their own land.
Yeah, it was private.
So now.
Himself.
But there should have been some kind of stipulation when you hooked into the city water.
Maybe they charge a tap fee like we do, you know?
And it could have, yeah, yeah, I'm sure it probably was.
You're never gonna find that, but I mean, that maybe is that what, that's what happened.
But so going forward, if Marine takes all these. Jumps through all these hoops. And they want a certified easement from the city, is that gonna be doable?
Wait a minute, that, it's not our line. They, she needs an easement from you.
You, they won't accept that, right?
They will not.
I mean, there's no way that the city can grant an easement on a private line across private property, I don't think.
Well, okay, so there's an easement between my house and my neighbors. Where the sewer and the water run through.
So if you wanted to look at it this another way, we as council could decide that we're gonna take that private line on as a public line. And then we're gonna pay all the expenses associated with that down line. And and you'll have to grant the city an easement then.
Yeah, or a public right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the difference between a right away and then an easement?
Well, an easement is actually. In your. Big, the big paper, you know, you're.
Registered.
Yeah, yeah.
And a right away? It's, would that help Marine out with this situation?
I don't know, I I think that we need to find out from the attorney what our legal response.
Here's something in the ordinance, we, we own from the main to the curb stop. And the curb stop to the house is the property owners. If you set a precedent that's. You want to be in arms that everybody in town will want their.
That's right. Every line up to the basement from here, up to the water meters.
But she don't want us to online, she just needed to have a bona fide easement. To get her land appraised.
We gotta go, have, ask our attorney. What we have to do.
Okay, by the way, I'm saying here is that I don't believe that we as the city can grant an easement. Across someone else's property.
Well, like I say, between my house.
We, we can grant an easement. Like uh, your property. If we're gonna take on it as a, as a public. Line.
But this one right here between me and my neighbor. That's water and sewer run up that. But that obviously was established a long time ago, an easement, right?
Yeah, if it's, if it's recorded, yeah.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's sewer line going between the houses.
Yeah, I mean, there's another one up here somewhere.
Coming way back, yeah.
That lane on there, isn't it?
But, but is that.
Like I said, that maps ain't necessarily right.
Is that a city easement? The city has an easement there.
I'm pretty sure when we, we put that in, yep.
Yep, that's a public water line.
Right now, what would happen?
Water main, yeah, yeah.
What would happen right now if in the middle of Robert's field, that pipe broke? He'd be responsible for paying for that cuz it's on his land?
He can go start it off, it's damaging his property.
What's that?
He could go shut it off or have it shut off if it's damaging his property.
And I'd be without water.
Right.
But I can't go on, I don't have access to his land without an easement to even have it repaired.
I still think it has to go, but we can contact your attorney and ask that question for sure, but I think it has to go between. Property owners, I think.
I mean, them, them people gotta realize this happened forty four years ago.
Oh, right, right.
The newer generation of people was, probably be, but I mean, is, I I don't think.
There's all these other homes in, in, in the city limits that have easement issues where.
We've gone through that already, you know, right up here with the sewer.
Yeah, I'm not right on the corner here, I can't think of the people's name.
You weren't up hand, you know.
Him was the goal behind, behind the house.
Three, three residences.
You end up paying yourself, didn't you?
No, the neighbor had to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but it was all private, yeah.
It was new up to your house and from his, your house to his, you know, you never had problems.
No, we didn't.
But he, he did.
Yeah, we had, we had lots of problems, but he had more of them. So we had Jetter bills for twenty plus years that we had to pay.
Okay, yeah, so. John, you had something?
I knew a little bit about it cuz I got a private line.
There you do, that's right.
You know, I, the easement, I have an easement across what used to be Marcel La Burge's property.
Yep, okay.
I own the easement. Yeah. And even if it's something I own.
Right.
You know, I can go on that property and repair that line. If something happens and then I have to restore it or whatever it was, you know, the city just owns from. The main line to your water drop off and then it's private. I own the rest of that line and then I own the easement. And the thing about an easement is if it's not recorded down at the courthouse. It ain't there.
Right.
You had to go through all that way back then.
Yeah, I didn't know all about it, yeah. You should get an easement from the property owner. And I guess I don't know exactly, you should get a lawyer and talk to him, cuz all I had to do was. Have my lawyer drop an easement and go down to the courthouse and record it and there it was, it was between me and the property owner. You know.
So you own that easement, how did, how did they?
They owned the property, I just own the easement.
Okay, alright.
An easement is just. I can go there and my line runs underneath there and if something happens, I got the right to go in there and fix it. And no one can ever build on top of it because I own the easement there, so no one could ever put a garage on top of it or something.
Alright, right.
And it has to be recorded and I'd say what happened here is whenever this property got sold. There was a lawyer that didn't do due diligence by telling these people what was going on here.
That's title company or something, right?
Yeah, there was.
Well, they probably. It wasn't.
It probably was never recorded forty years ago.
Nobody knew.
Yeah.
So I guess maybe Jack that avenue, get a lawyer, see if he can draw it up between you and I. But we don't know, again, yet, if it's on the Barnard property, which was Conley's at the time. Or Conley's property, or if it's on mine, so first we gotta find out where it's at.
And that's not, I don't think it's the city's responsibility to find.
If you look at where those shut offs are, right to the, your property line where your fence makes the corner there. There's a, I think there's a still fence there.
That fence.
Not much of it.
That line, he is where that fence is.
But it went right out to that, I'm not saying right on the corner, but it went out right straight that way on the property line.
And then where did it cut over?
Right at that, where the property split.
Okay. So.
As far as I know.
It comes to the property line. But how do I find out from the property line where it moves to my house?
That's what I, hopefully the, the rural water.
They, they could tell us where in town when we had the little water leak, they get this listening thing. That they just, they can go along and they'll just put a flag, 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 like they'll flag it for, they can hear it. Then you turn the water on on your end and they listen to it flow and they mark it the whole way.
And he, he was here that day when this hydrant got fixed.
Said that something about. You remember what he said about?
He had a little fiber optic thing that he can go a hundred and fifty feet out, right?
Yeah.
Through either taking the meter loose on one end. Or if they have it down, uh, a little spigot.
I can, I, about that, I can remember exactly.
But they said he can go a hundred and fifty feet out in the private line, it's not even this big. So that would give her and the other individuals direction of where their lines are.
Hydrant leaking and. He could hear the water flowing from just walking along down the street.
Really?
Hear that?
Yeah.
Remember, like a year ago?
Yeah.
If she turns the water faucet on at her house full blast. He can walk along and hear that with that machine. And throw a flag wherever it goes.
John?
And I'm assuming what they're talking about on this survey and is once you get that flag. You're gonna have to get a surveying company in there. Cuz they're gonna wanna know, it's on the east fifteen feet of this description of. Yeah, they're not talking about surveying the whole property, they're talking about they wanna survey for a legal description. Yeah, they're not talking about surveying the whole property, they're talking about they wanna survey for a legal description where this.
If they ever have.
And like, we, we don't know if it's on the Hiller property right now, or if it's on.
And that's.
My private market, and then they'll have to get that, and. So I think you got some good direction there, you know, talk to that rural water guy, get him on here first and you'll. Be able to find out and then get a lawyer and see, hopefully that, they can write up an easement between you and I, or. You and Barnard, or Lee, cause it could be on his property.
Yes, see, that's what I'm being told I can do, it's gotta be. It's gotta be surveyed, it's gotta be located, it then has to go to an attorney. To make sure that the, the location and everything is property and that no one's contesting it.
Yep.
And then the easement can be drawn up, and then that easement goes to the county to be recorded.
Yeah.
But there's, there's a lot involved in it.
Well, John brought up a good point, he owns his easement, he, it's been done, how long ago did you do that, John?
Thirty, twenty-five years.
Oh, it's been that long already?
I would own the easement then?
Yes, if you get an easement, you're going to own the easement.
It'll be.
You're gonna own the property.
No, just to go on it.
Have your line there, and the right to go in there and do any repairs.
It'd probably be marked on the abstract at the house.
Yeah, mine was, that's all recorded by lawyers, so it's recorded down at the.
Courthouse.
Courthouse and, yeah.
Now, Hiller's property just got surveyed, so that line between. His property and the Hillers should be surveyed within the last, what, couple of months again?
Yeah, and then I have my posts out there from being surveyed when I bought it.
Okay.
So, man, it's, it's pretty cut and dried where, where the property lines are, we just gotta find out. Which property the line is on.
Yep.
And then, you know, you'll need this easement that's.
Ten foot or something?
Well, probably more than that, you gotta be able to.
Gotta get a.
I would. Either of a minimum or something, you gotta be able to get a backhoe in there.
Yep.
Yep.
And fix it if something goes wrong.
Still, alright, I hope we answered some of your questions for you, give you some more guidance for which direction to go, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty. Um, I guess that about ends it, oh, we have a couple of bids here, Ron, you have?
Yep, for, uh. WW?
WW, that what you're after, yeah.
Yep.
Have any of you noticed when you leave the post office and you drive north, how the, your vehicle goes like this?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, we don't know what to do down there, if that's gonna have to be removed, or, you know, is the base changing? But that is so wishy washy down there, so, you know, um, Ron's got a couple estimates here.
Well, the top part is all the other patching in town, that twenty to thirty-five thousand. Depending how far, you know, some of it, once you start digging, it might get bigger, you know, the hole. So that's that part, and then you get down here, it's spelt wrong, but it's Hawk Street in front of the post office. And that's to mill a two inch existing. For the whole street.
For the whole block, front of the church. Uh, down the post office from stop sign to stop sign.
Yep. And then the one below that is down here on Park Corner, across from Roberts. Uh, that's for doing what it says here, for thirty-three hundred.
Yeah, that seal coating is, there's about a three-quarter inch lift that's on there right before the, the spill basin, the cement.
Oh, yeah.
And that's breaking up.
Yep.
And, uh, he said, you know, they'd come in there, they'd scrape off what they kid with the Bobcat, they'd mill the edges, blend it all in. And now after the hard rain the other night there, it's not even making it to the, the spill basin anymore, it's, it's running across the street, well, that's no good.
No.
So, probably would be a very good investment there to fix it that way.
It seems like a very reasonable price.
Yeah.
Three thousand bucks.
And then down by Hawk Street there, we need to replace that one manhole, right?
Yep, that's gotta be.
Work is done, there's that old, old, uh, manhole that.
Where it comes out of the alley there.
Stunk down. Really bad.
And that's, that would be a boning thing?
Yeah.
In addition to this.
In addition.
Yeah, and this is just. Blacktop, just blacktopping, yeah.
I mean, that's gotta be replaced whether you blacktop or not.
Right. Yep. And they'll wait, you know, uh, we gotta crack ceiling net too, so that'll be done by Pearson, right?
Yep.
Yep. So they won't pave anything until after that. And, uh.
So we'd have about seventy thousand dollars worth if we did these three, or these, what, here before us. And then our estimate for seal coating wasn't that around eighty?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, okay, so you know, we could have a hundred and forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars we'd be spending on our. Streets this summer, but we haven't seal coated for what, four or five years?
Been a while, yeah.
And, you know, we did some repairs last year.
Yep.
Uh, just like down here in front of what I call Eileen's house, the seal coating there is popped off after the swing. So that'll have to be milled down and W put back in, so, the winter was very hard. On streets, I think.
Let's say not just good thunder, if you drive around Mankato.
Yeah.
You know what roads are like.
Yep.
So it isn't just good thunder by no means, no. But that's what happened, this kind of a year, I don't think I've ever seen one like this, that it got that bad.
Don't all that freeze thaw.
Yep, and then it rained, you know.
In January.
And everything up.
Yeah, so I mean, do we, uh, accept this bid and, uh, you know, the possibility of twenty, up to thirty-five? And do the other for thirty, and the other one for thirty-three, thirty-one and thirty-three hundred?
I mean, it did a really good job last year, I mean, it.
Yep.
Their workers are really, they, they know.
We've already got the quotes, we know that these proof units are the lowest price, is the lowest price, we done that already last time.
Yeah.
This is just basically approving, getting the work done now, so. We did the last overlay last time.
The what?
The last layer, like right in front of my house, something from there. Which is the place there.
You mean where the seal coating came off?
The old patch.
Yep, see, that's where that water got underneath there this winter and froze it off. And, you know, we were seal coating every three years there for a while, and we were taking good care of stuff and. And, and another thing, you know, the oil dries out, and when it does, it just gets hard and it flakes off. So, you know, when they start milling, they might go five feet farther each way there to get it, so it's stuck.
Cause right in front of mine, it's low, water sits there all the time, and I know that's not good.
And yeah, see, there, I was just seeing that the other day, that we needed to add some more to this, cause the. The street is that far below the gutter, and it wasn't years, and I can't remember where it was. But that needs to get up so you can get that water off the street, onto the gutter.
Yeah.
That's the purpose of the gutter. Yeah, maybe we'd have to do a little addition there, I mean.
No, I, I mean, anything, and like I say, there's another piece up here on the block that didn't get done either, so.
Okay. Well, somebody wanna make a motion then for these three figures to, so we can sign this, send it back, and we kinda got this locked in then, right?
Yeah. Well. Yeah, per unit figures.
Yeah.
Yeah, the per unit figures, not, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So move.
Well, just saying, oh, Jim brought up a spot that Ron didn't have down.
That's what I'm saying, the per unit number is what we.
Yeah, yeah, so we can what?
Yeah, if I can think where that street was icing and we add it on, what happens if it gets to thirty-seven thousand?
I said per foot.
Per foot?
It's the per foot.
Yeah, so I mean, it's just, like you say, it's gonna be a little bit more on this anyway, cause this block up here, we didn't get on.
What we were interested in knowing was what the unit cost was for this work, and that's what we looked at the quotes for determining, so. These, this was low, so. If you have to add, we were at the low number.
Do you agree if it goes up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So somebody wanna make a motion then to approve this for a WW blacktop?
I did.
You did?
Yep.
Okay, someone a second?
One second.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Alright.
We'll do this.
Huh?
Do this one?
Yeah.
And both, yeah. Got bids for, uh, taking the house down that we bought down here on the corner. The bid didn't come in low with, uh, Boning Brothers. I guess it's not Boning Brothers, yeah, it is, Boning Brothers, yeah. So it's a matter, it's, uh. You wanna throw up figures or not?
Did they, uh, were they gonna cap off the water and sewer?
Yep, I talked about that, yep.
And in this bid?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Yes. And did you tell them to use the dirt on premises to fill the holes?
Yep.
Are they gonna dig out the stump?
If, but that'll be extra, either both of them would be extra, I mean, that's an extra.
Okay.
Cause I don't even know where the, where the stumps go anymore, they, they all, they don't have a lot hall in the landfill, do they?
No.
So they must go down.
Go down to, uh. SMC, huh?
Out on Third Avenue out there someplace?
I don't really know.
I don't know, maybe, evidently they do someplace though.
Well, I know all them trees that went from, uh, twenty-two into Irvine Spit that year, all went out there.
So they must have a place for them.
I don't know.
It's really, I mean, that'll be extra on either one, so.
Somebody wanna make a motion then for Boning Brothers to remove the house, fill in the hole, disconnect water and sewer?
Does, does that include like throwing some grass seed down and?
No, no, neither one would, neither one, alright. He's got the spinner to do everything, he's, no, neither one had that.
Good, and we did, uh. Asbestos.
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple, uh, windows we gotta come out.
Yep. But with that, somebody make a motion then to award this to the Boning Brothers for the total of thirteen thousand dollars? Sound good? Sound good, Scott, Neil?
I'm making a motion.
I'm making a motion, someone a second?
Second.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Alright, I think we're almost out of paper.
I hope so.
Uh, there's just some FYI information for the city council here from Kennedy. And in your packet, you can read it, and go from there. And if there's not anything else for tonight.
Appliances that you guys are talking about, in that house.
They still gotta be removed, right?
What's that?
The appliances still gotta be removed.
Yeah, like see, he'll just, uh, he'll drag them out with the backhoe and then, uh. Just load them up.
Or do we take them out as good and, uh?
I think, I mean, who are you gonna, just first come, first serve, or what?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I thought they were gonna sell or put them up for a bit or something, that was discussed at one of the meetings a couple of months ago.[1655.91]